Okay, thank you very much. Good afternoon, the time is now 1:06 PM and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education Regular Meeting of June 8th, 2021 is reconvened. Marilyn, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
There are, I am expecting four people, three are currently in the lobby waiting. So if you're in the lobby waiting, we will admit you one by one. I will keep a three-minute timer so that you can offer comments to the board. Just so you are aware, they do not engage in a back-and-forth conversation. While you are providing or after you're providing your comments, they may contact you later. If a caller becomes disrespectful, we will ask you to cease and please provide your comments in a more acceptable manner because we do want to hear what you've got to say. So I will be keeping a three-minute timer. Mike, if you can let the first person in the lobby.
Okay, she should be in.
Okay, caller, welcome to the State Board of Education meeting. You'll have three minutes to address the board. And if you could please state your name, the city you're from, and if you're representing a group and then provide your comments, I will keep a three-minute timer. Thank you. Caller, are you ready?
Are you redressing me?
I am, if you could please state your name, the city you're from, and then I'll keep a three-minute timer.
Okay, thank you. Joellen Tzarczyk, Howell, Michigan. The fundamental question, will the Michigan Blueprint address the current needs of students? Best practices for successful outcomes must be considered two ways. Significant academic deficits in literacy, math, science, and emotional impact. Number one, we can all agree that absolute learning deficits our children have suffered must be our first priority. We can agree that learning success is the most important prerequisite to equal access for all students to life success. That goal should be our blueprint as educators. Secondly, student emotional vulnerabilities. The blueprint does not establish warm, welcoming, social and peer groups' acceptance and safety. The recommendations are developmentally inappropriate for children, and they are abstract concepts children cannot process. Is there potential for harm? Unequivocally, yes. Children blame themselves when confronted with problems they're not equipped to handle, as in cases of divorce where children almost universally blame themselves. Victims of child abuse, the same. And even with illnesses, young girls are particularly vulnerable. A study out of India looked at 15- to 19-year-old adolescents. Quote, "Self-blame is one of the most toxic forms of emotional abuse. It means that one assumes personal responsibility for the occurrence of a traumatic event when it is clear that the individual is actually the victim." Psychologists report, research over the past two decades has shown that shame is related to a wide variety of psychological symptoms, including low self-esteem, depression, anxiety, eating disorder, PTSD, and suicidal ideation. Our children have been subject to severe psychological impact due to blame in this ideology, and the blueprint is not developmentally appropriate for children. We must consider actual learning deficits. Those will not be addressed if our focus is distracted to CRT. Teachers are not psychologists, they have no business in this sociopolitical morat. The blueprint triggers a Pandora's box of untold psychological disturbances suggested by critical race theory. It's a perverse experiment in indoctrination and blame. We need to set our children free and our teachers free to teach. Thank you.
Thank you for providing comments. Mike, do you have the next caller?
Okay, she should be in.
Hi, this is Marilyn, thanks for providing comment. If you could please state your name and the city you're from, and then I will keep a three-minute timer so that you can address the board. It's the board's practice not to have a back-and-forth conversation at this time. Whenever you're ready, we're ready.
Thank you, my name is Stephanie Burke and I live in Troy, Michigan. And my concerns are with the blueprint for Michigan. With critical race theory being implemented across public education nationwide, and wrestling with the pros and cons of this being promoted in public education in Michigan. This places heavy emphasis on racial identity and oppression and pervasive heavy social justice reform and society viewed as systemically racist. While I recognize that racism is a problem, it should be opposed in appropriate ways. The blueprint for Michigan places excessive emphasis on differences and oppression when greater emphasis should be on equality and common opportunities and values and the freedoms we enjoy as Americans. As a mother of four, you know, I'm very concerned also with sexuality being implemented into curriculum. I do not think it is appropriate at all, you know? And just this emphasis on race is not acceptable. Children don't see color, and to say that my three-year-old is racist with these ideologies is just unacceptable to parents. So I really hope you guys take that into consideration with this blueprint for Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you for calling again. Do we have another caller? Is there a caller on the line? Hello?
Yes, there is, yes, there is, sorry.
No, that's, thank you for joining us. If you could please state your name and where you're from and then provide your comments, I will keep a three-minute timer. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Houston, I reside in Flint, Michigan. I'm calling as a mother of a 12-year-old deaf student who attends Michigan School for the Deaf in fifth grade. I'm calling to tell you that you forgot about us. Over this year, and with the COVID going on, our kids had to do virtual the whole way. I understand that the needs of the school are complex, and our major concern as parents were our deaf-plus kids, our kids who have extra disabilities on top of being deaf who were left to sit in front of a computer screen, basically should have been sitting, could have been sitting in front of the wall. They had no communication and administration was unwilling to compromise with us to get at least their education. There was three students allowed to attend school this year to go to the skill center. So we thought, why couldn't we allow our deaf-plus students to get the education that they're needed? Michigan Department of Education is, the board is responsible for Michigan School for the Deaf, and not one of you members have ever came to visit or yet know anything about deaf culture and their needs, yet you make the executive decisions about us. We believe it's imperative that we have our own board with people who are knowledgeable in deaf culture and in deaf education. Under this board, we've seen Michigan School for the Deaf decline. We have over 2,000-plus deaf students with IEP in the state of Michigan, and our deaf school only has under 150, if not less, since parents decided to pull their children out of school during COVID because they had no education. We've also seen controversy going on with people being hired that shouldn't be hired at the school with prior knowledge of inappropriate behavior. I would invite you all to think about us for once during the summer and prepare to make Michigan School for the Deaf a real school so that we can be in the top 10 in 10 as well, right along with the rest of our peers. We ask that you, you know, think about us over the year, over the summer, and come back ready with a plan to look at bettering our school for deaf education for the students here in the state of Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another caller?
Okay.
Hello, welcome, thanks for providing comment to the State Board of Education. If you could please state your name and the town you're from and then provide your comments, I will keep a three-minute timer.
My name's Kristen Carson from Macomb County, Michigan.
Go ahead, please provide your comments.
Okay.
Ms. Carson, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Please provide your comments.
Okay, I wanted to address the slideshow presentation that was given by Dr. Keldune this morning. As she stated, you know, talking about the high elderly population that was affected by COVID, the deaths affected by COVID. Yet she failed to mention the fact that at the beginning of the pandemic, Governor Whitmer had mandated in an executive order that COVID-positive patients be placed in nursing homes. Another key point that I saw is that recently, the high positive tests with school-aged children, that's correlating with the mandatory testing with the school athletes. Of course, there's going to be an increase in positive tests if you are testing more people. You know, research that I've done, the average death of a COVID-19 patient is 78, which also correlates with the average age of death of anybody in the United States. Another thing that I found is roughly 75% of hospitalizations due to COVID, these patients were found to be vitamin D deficient. Anybody living above the 35th parallel is automatically going to be vitamin D deficient in the winter months. Dr. Fauci himself had spoken on the House floor and stated that he himself even takes 8,000 to 9,000 IU's of vitamin D supplements in the winter months. That being said, there is, there's been a deficit with our children not being face-to-face, not having face-to-face learning. The fear and the propaganda and the narrative that's been pushed by the mainstream media and the people that want to keep masks on our children and make vaccines mandatory for our children. It's definitely correlating with the fact that it was stated earlier in the morning session that 3,324 third-grade students were identified for retention, to not go past third grade and have to repeat it over again, which would be the recommendation. So there's overwhelming evidence that the system is failing our students. And this fear narrative that's being expressed is failing our kids.
We appreciate your comments, but the timer has gone off.
Okay, thank you very much for your time and for the ability to speak.
Thank you. And Mike, I do not think there's any more public comment. Do you agree?
That's correct.
Okay, this concludes public comment. Thank you to everyone who shared their comments with the board.
Thank you to those who presented public comment this afternoon. The next item on the agenda is Presentation on Michigan Blueprint for Comprehensive Student Recovery. Today, we welcome Mr. Kevin Polston, Chairperson of Michigan Student Recovery Advisory Council and Superintendent of Godfrey Lee Public Schools in Wyoming, Michigan. Mr. Polston will share information on Michigan Blueprint for Comprehensive Student Recovery. Superintendent, good afternoon.
Dr. Rice, board members, thanks for the opportunity to share the blueprint with you today. I'm going to go through a presentation and then at the end, or along the way, you're welcome to ask questions as needed. So the Blueprint for Comprehensive Recovery is a document that was made entirely by experts from across the state in Michigan. Deputy Superintendent Garant sat in on all of our meetings to make sure that we had clear communication with the department, as well as discussions on how the blueprint can align to the top 10 and 10 strategies because we certainly want to speak with one voice across the state. So I'm going to share a presentation to walk through these recommendations and make sure we got this right. Hopefully, everybody can see that. All right. So we had 29 members that were appointed by Governor Whitmer. Many of them were from the Return to School Advisory Council. We had one replacement because our chairperson, Tanya Allen, moved out of state. We also had four legislators that were bipartisan in representation, two House members and two Senate members appointed by their, recommended by the leadership and appointed to this committee. We divided our work across seven subcommittees. Academic Recovery, Student Well-being, Physical Health, Post-Secondary Transitions, Family and Community Engagement, Innovation and Redesign, and then Policy and Budget. We had a total of 80 subcommittee members, including the advisory council. So we pulled in over 50 other members and had two co-chairs per subcommittee. We also had advisors that partnered with us. Opportunity Labs had a unique blend of experience from education and health, as we know. That was the challenge that we were faced with is making sure that we could balance those two. But we also wanted to bring in leading experts from across the country. So this wasn't being conducted without the best thinking from other states or other organizations. So former Secretary of Education, Arnie Duncan, Dr. Nancy Gutierrez, CEO from the Leadership Academy, Becky Pringle, and Randy Weingarten, representing our National Labor for Teachers, presented together, and then Dr. Karen Mapp, who's an expert on family and community engagement from Harvard University. Their work anchored the blueprint in best practice, but also in the leading thinking from across the country. We set this vision to create conditions for safe, equitable, and high-performance education system that provides access and opportunity to each child in Michigan. Our mission was to build clear guidance, including resources and tools, that help superintendents and school leaders build a comprehensive, yet evidence-based and equity-driven recovery plan that I'd say most importantly, that our community trusts. We know the experience of students across Michigan was not uniform. We know that some were in-person every day since the first day of school. We know some were virtual every day since the first day of school. And we know that there were various modalities at all points in between. So we wanted to make sure that the plan was flexible, that communities and schools could look at for what was to meet the needs of their students and the conditions that they faced. We established seven criteria to evaluate recommendations. Student voice is critical. We oftentimes overlook the most important stakeholder we serve, and that's our children. We want to look at this as a multi-year approach. We need to be clear that 18 months, so it shall be the case in the fall, of disrupted learning will not be solved by Labor Day. We need to look at this over a multi-year approach that encompasses the timeframe of the federal funds. The strategies are grounded in evidence that we either need to see evidence-based, evidence-informed, or best practices and supporting data for our recommendations. Our educators are critical for implementation of the recommendations, and we wanted our educators to have efficacy in this process. We know that we can't do it all, and so priority and focus is critical to make sure that we are meeting our student needs. Equity is visible throughout our recommendations. We wanted to make sure that that was a hallmark of our plan and that we look at our kids as whole humans to know that their social, emotional, mental, physical, and academic well-being must be considered. So I want to walk through some of the blueprint with you to give you an example of what's inside. First, this is, again, our primary audience was school leaders, also policymakers. And so to engage in creating recovery plans that, again, can get to the trust of our community, there's a 10-step process that includes engaging and establishing a recovery committee that can represent the community. And then how to look at data and metrics for what is it exactly that students need in the schools? And it may look unique to the age of students or even profiles of students within the district. Also engaging stakeholders. So having opportunities, whether it's surveys, town hall meetings, community forums, having opportunities to really engage with the needs of the community. And then having the approach go through a review over time. So as you build the plan, implement it, have processes to review and revise. So I'll walk through what a simple, or excuse me, a sample of recommendation may look like. So we're going to start with a challenge statement. And so this case, this is in our wellness section, which starts the blueprint because we believe we need to start with relationships and the well-being of our children. So we know that one of our challenges was incomplete knowledge of the comprehensive and wellness needs of students and families. And the root cause of that is our staff have been working incredibly hard, but we know even pre-pandemic, we didn't have the staffing levels that research calls for as identified in the School Finance Research Collaborative. And we know that we don't always have the wellness data necessary to make informed decisions. And so the root cause really caused the challenge. And then the goal to meet that was to establish comprehensive knowledge of student wellness needs during the first two months of the upcoming school year and then continuing ongoing support throughout the school year. So that means starting with a universal screener as part of a high-leverage action. So we gave examples in supporting evidence. And of course, a high-leverage action right here in Michigan, you'll find those throughout the document. We also want to make sure that families have access to educational opportunities based on wellness and the voice of wellness needs. Physical wellness, in addition to social, emotional, and mental wellness, is also something that is of concern. As we know, opportunities for activity and athletics were limited at points during the pandemic. We also believe that the wellness data, you know, should be disaggregated by race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, or even neighborhoods within a school district to make sure that equity is visible. As I indicated, evidence was the hallmark of the document, that it's, throughout, we supply supporting background and exemplars for how school districts can go about implementing the blueprint. So you'll see that here under supporting evidence. And I'd say, most importantly, we'll see high-leverage actions in Michigan that can serve as anchors for our work. So sometimes, these recommendations feel like they're out of reach. And maybe it's more than what a district feels that they can accomplish. But by giving exemplar right here in Michigan, we believe that school districts identify that, yeah, they are doing many of these practices or maybe have some gaps to fill, but there's also a resource that they may know that they can contact to learn more. So I'm going to walk through what the recommendations look like. And as I indicated, every one of these recommendations is homegrown, Michigan-made, right here by Michigan educators for the 100,000 educators in the state and the 1.5 million students. We also know that when we talk about recovery, that doesn't mean return. We know that through everyone's best effort, that we weren't serving every child well pre-pandemic, and the pandemic did exacerbate existing inequities in our system. And so the opportunity for recovery is really to rebuild toward a brighter future. And so that was critical for our committee, was that we established the vision of where we want to go. We start with academic recovery. We did not use the phrase "learning loss." We didn't want to use deficit language. And so unfinished teaching and learning, or academic recovery, is language that we used. And we looked at it through a multi-tiered system of supports, or MTSS, as you may be more familiar with. We looked at unfinished teaching and learning in both the Tier 1 and Tier 2 for students who had unfinished learning or significant unfinished learning that would call for additional supports in addition to the Tier 1. But we also know that there were significant numbers, as many as 50,000 to 60,000 across the state, that were disengaged from school this year, or sometimes referred to as the "lost" students. And so we wanted to make sure we had recommendations across the blueprint that call for supports for re-engaging students from, that were not, that were a part of us through the 1920 school year, that were not with us in the 2021 school year. We also know that educators are critical to the success. And so we can't just try a whole bunch of new things without the training necessary for our staff. So professional learning is critical for successful recovery efforts. Student well-being encompassed, and our chairs are here, both wellness and school climate. So we started the document off with wellness because we believe that we must start with relationships, and we must look at our children as whole humans. And so universal screening, again, professional development to make sure that we have the necessary tools and supports for our students, especially once you conduct a screener and you get information, you must be ready to react and respond. We also know that our data suggests that COVID was not experienced uniformly throughout our state, that our communities of color had higher levels of incidence, higher levels of death throughout COVID. So therefore, it is closer to our communities of color, and we must look at that throughout all of our systems. And education being the one that we're focused on here, but also through our healthcare system, housing, you know, and criminal justice, that these inequities that we must focus on. And so the school climate section of the blueprint really focuses on racial inequity. As I mentioned, physical health was embedded into our wellness section. You see our chairs in front of you there. And so I wanted to look like what a school environment could be. So looking at ventilation and safety measures to make sure that even post-pandemic, these are excellent protocols and practices to have in place. We know fresh air is great for a quality learning environment. But we also know having ventilation systems and filtering systems are great for preventing things like common cold, flu. We want to make sure that kids have access to the holistic supports. Okay, I think I lost the presentation. Okay, I'm going to see if I can reshare. All right, so someone else is sharing right now, and so I'm going to see if I can reshare. All right, is that on the screen now?
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you. So school nurse, one of the things we found out throughout the pandemic is that we didn't have the necessary numbers of school nurses throughout our schools. And so a recommendation is that we do focus on having a closer relationship with school nurses in schools, and whether that's through a collaboration or using measures like telehealth, having school nurse accessibility is important. School social workers, counselors, right now, you know, the average ratio between students to counselors in Michigan is 750 to 1, 49th in the country, whereas the recommendation is 250 to 1. And we want to have evidence-based standards for COVID-related disruptions to in-person learning. While we know that the vaccine is eligible for 12, students 12 and up, and we hope this fall will be available for all school-aged students, that it is likely that COVID will still be present in our schools and communities in the fall. We must have recommendations to support that. One of the things that we learned throughout the pandemic is that we have to get closer to our families and our grassroots community partners to make sure that we wrap school around our families and not the other way around. So again, this word "trust" is vital. And not that it was necessarily lost, but it's continuing that we continue those close relationships throughout our recovery efforts. So authentic communication and sincere relationships with families, that means we meet them where they are at and partner with those community programs or grassroots organizations who are often go-to places within a community. And how can we properly resource them, especially for re-engaging students? These are often places that know our families as well or better than our schools do. So how can we get closer, whether they're faith-based, whether they're nonprofits? They're often places in our community that are go-to for necessary resources, of which we believe education is vital to that. So how can schools through outreach utilize grassroots organizations and family engagement to, you know, build successful recovery plans? Vulnerable families and students, whether the vulnerability is based on socioeconomic status, whether it is based on, you know, health or, you know, racial inequity, we know that we need to pay more attention to those students and families. Our students that, as we know, in 2020, we weren't able to provide, you know, the in-person graduation experience. Many did excellent jobs of virtual or drive-throughs or even door-to-door delivery. As our students transitioned from high school onto post-secondary credential programs, we also know we have to pave the way there as well. Students should not bear the brunt of having the unfortunate timing to experience a pandemic with further consequence in post-secondary. But what we know is that FAFSA applications were down last fall. Post-secondary enrollment was down last fall. And so communication campaign navigators to help students and families navigate the process, but also intervention and support programs in partnership with our post-secondary programs is, again, an essential piece. programs is, again, an essential piece so that students can have success after high school. We know post-secondary attainment is vital to not only the success of our students and our education system, but also to our economy. And then we also looked at how can we capitalize on the opportunity to design a new path forward as we found that our educators did an amazing job of pivoting with delivery of education because we had to. But now that we have this opportunity to design a new system, because we're not going back, there's elements that we've learned through the pandemic that will be implemented into district and community plans. So what is the opportunity in front of us to look at what evidence suggests about, from the learning sciences, about how can our school and our education delivery be more in line with what research suggests for how students learn best? And there is models out there that we can look at, there's evidence-based from other states, but how can we also make sure that innovation happens closest to the child? And so you'll see recommendations such as innovation zones that allow for school communities to identify what is best for the children and the innovations necessary. How can we look at, and we talk about 21st century, here we are in 2021, we're more than 20% through the 21st century, it's really time to look at how can learning be holistic and not parsed out into segments? And I know that there's been significant work across the department, across the state with this very idea to make learning more personalized. And how can we use assessment to really inform our teaching and learning and the representation of learning to look different rather than just on summative assessments, ongoing demonstrations of learning? Then lastly, for our policymakers, and here are our co-chairs for our Policy and Finance Committee, is to look at adequate, equitable, and sustainable funding. We have the research, we have the model for what that could look like in Michigan, and I was incredibly proud of the governor's proposed budget in looking at the recommendations from the blueprint to identify how to best use the supplemental funds that were, that the consensus revenue estimating conference identified. To also look at consistent, I'll say predictable, funding. So looking at a multi-year model for how we count pupils in the state as required by the Constitution, every local school district has to approve a budget by June 30th, yet we don't know our student count that makes up 90% of our budget formula until October. That's just not a good way of doing business. So if we look at a three-year time period and we count the highest pupil count in that three years, it's going to give more certainty for school districts in creating budgets so we can have staffing that is based on the needs of our students, not on the hopes of a budget number. Top talent, and I know the department has really focused on creating opportunities and pipeline for talent retention is our best retention, our talent development strategy. But we also know we need our pipeline of teachers to be more reflective of the demographics that we serve in our state. So we need to have a two-pronged approach. One here is creating the conditions for success in our school cultures and school climate for our teachers. We need to hold our teachers up in high esteem, but we also need to look at how can we grow talent from within, these Grow Your Own programs of support staff, or in the midst, we have our pipeline of talent in our students, how are we encouraging and incentivizing new prospective educators? So there's recommendations to support that as well. I mentioned the innovation zones, but also a universal support for high-performance education system is preschool accessible to all. And when we look at, from the Kellogg Foundation, that says for every dollar of investment into early childhood, there's a $13 return on investment. And that means, over the long haul, that we look at what is the impact of those early childhood programs, and how can that support equitable outcomes for each and every child? And so expanding Great Start Readiness Program even to three-year-olds, but also looking at childcare initiatives to make sure that our families have what they need for their success as well. So, sorry, trying to navigate here. So that's an overview of the blueprint. It went incredibly fast, and hopefully it gave you a summary, but certainly willing to entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. Board members, questions or comments from you? Mr. McMillan, some questions.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I wanted to make sure I understood, so how this was going to be used? I think I saw here that it's not required, but I'm anticipating, or I guess I'm suspecting that with all the money coming in from the feds, like this would be one-way kind of a blueprint for how maybe districts could use it. They, and also, like you said, lawmakers, the governor in the foreword gave a resounding approval to the blueprint and said, now legislators, it's your turn, basically. So in some of these areas, but I guess some of the others, locals could decide. I don't, I don't think MDE is going to push or require, I don't think they have the authority to require this stuff, but at any rate, is that kind of, with all, I think it's $5 billion or whatever the money is that's coming to the state, this might be kind of a blueprint for how districts could think about using it?
Yeah, so you hit it on the head, and thanks for the question. These are all recommendations and guidelines. There is nothing mandated in the blueprint. But when you think about the 800-plus school districts, we talk about LEAs and PSAs, if they all had to do the work to create their own recovery plans, it'd be incredibly inefficient and redundant. And so our council worked incredibly hard. We were organized in February, and we had the recommendations done and published by May 19th. So if I think about that timeframe, it was all about getting the information as quickly as we could to school districts to create these multi-year plans for how to use federal funds. And the American Recovery Plan funds is really what we're talking about here that currently are eligible to be used through 2024. But there's also going to be the potential state recovery funds and how to use those as we're seeing through summer school and other programming. So when I say that word "trust," I think the most important thing here is that we have to make good on the investment of these significant generational federal funds to align them to what research suggests will help our students and our system recover so that we can achieve the ambitious goals that we've set forth, like top 10 and 10, or allow each child to live out their unique human potential. And when we set that, that was the spirit of it.
Okay. And then you said that there were surveys and town halls conducted. Where were those? Like, how did you get, how did you try to get feedback from a broad array of people?
Yeah, and so the development of the blueprint did not use community engagement. That was a recommendation for school leaders to create recovery plans, is to do that level of engagement with their community.
Okay. Well, this is obviously extremely important, so I want to get into a couple of details. On page 27 in the school climate section, there is, it talks about, well, first of all, on page 27, it talks about root causes of perpetual and exacerbation of inequities, disproportionality, and it talks about systemic racism. And what's your definition of systemic racism and the root cause?
So when we look at our data across the state, really across the country, we know that brilliance is universal, yet opportunity isn't. So when we look at our performance on standardized assessments, and we isolate for poverty, we still see significant disproportionality along racial lines, in particular for African-Americans and Latinx students. When we look at the United States Department of Education Civil Rights Data Collection on suspension and expulsions, and we see significant disproportionality for students of color, in particular African-American and Latinx students, we attribute that to systemic racism, that it's no intentional effort, that there's implicit biases that we all bring with us that manifest itself in these efforts, because we believe each and every child is brilliant in this state.
Okay. And then, so implicit biases. And then over in the supporting evidence, implicit bias and systemic racism, the first thing that you could click on there, the Center for Racial Justice, I go to that, and it talks about unconscious bias, talking impact, unconscious bias and microaggressions, training. They will also practice strategies to promote positive racial identity development in children, including addressing misconceptions about race and reversing unconscious racial bias. So we're going to be talking to children about unconscious racial bias. So what kind of things would be talked about to children about unconscious racial bias?
So I think, we want to provide these resources for educators to make sure that the plans fit best for the unique needs of the community. So these are, again, recommendations. So when you say, what are we going to be talking about? That's going to be up to the local school district to determine what is the best fit for them. Our council started with a student panel with kids representing the whole state of Michigan, Upper Peninsula, Detroit, and really all points in between. And when you listen to the student panel, these are all, there's one middle school student and all high school kids, and you listen to their experience throughout the pandemic, or you look at what our data suggests from like student perception surveys, students understand, especially through the last two years, that we've seen a social justice movement around race. And so I think it's important to engage in these discussions because the data suggests that students don't always see that their identity is reflected in school community, school culture, school curriculum. And so it's important to have tools for schools, if this is a strategy they choose to implement, that they have resources that they can use to engage.
Yeah, but like, one of the callers that called in during a public comment, she's Jo Ellen, she's a former longtime school teacher, and she mentioned that particularly younger girls, teenage, early teens, they really internalize this stuff. And if you're going to start telling them that because of their race, because they're white, they're unconscious, they have unconscious racial bias, I mean, I think it's wholly inappropriate to be using this link and promoting what is, in fact, CRT, Critical Race Theory, for children. I mean, I just think that that's a problem. And then when I move over to the wellness section, page 14, it talks, there's a link in the high-leverage actions, it's the next-to-last one where it says, ensure school staff have access to a library of trauma-informed best practices. And then there's a hot link, including racial trauma. And then you click on that, and it goes to the Mental Health America. And in the first paragraph of racial trauma, it talks about the US, in the US, Black Indigenous People of Color, BIPOC, are most vulnerable due to living under a system of white supremacy. And so I guess my question to you, this must be obviously important if it's in the high-leverage actions, and the governor confirmed it as well and really approves of it, what kind of system of white supremacy are people of color living under in the US? I mean, we're going to be telling our children that they are living in a white supremacist system, and you're promoting this, you're suggesting this be done, this is a big action point in your mind. How do you feel that we are a white supremacist system? Could you explain that?
We have to look at what does the data suggest, as I said earlier. And our data across the state of Michigan is quite clear. A Detroit News...
That we're a white supremacist system? It's quite clear?
You know, Board Member McMillan, I did not say that, so if I could finish my...
No, but you're confirming it. You're saying you like this, it's in your report.
I'd be happy to share the background if you...
The governor supports it too, she thinks we're in a white supremacist system, obviously.
I'm going to defer to the President.
No, this is yours, this is a big deal, we're going to spend $5 billion, you better know what you're talking about.
Excuse me. If you're going to ask a question of our guest, please...
Shut down good discussion, that's a typical leftist view.
But not earlier this morning.
Ask somebody earlier this morning.
I'll ask it nicely. I asked, what is the system that you're claiming we're in? How is it done? What does it look like? Explain it. You're advocating it.
Be happy to explain the background for where that recommendation came from. In a Detroit News article from 2018, it listed Michigan as the second-most segregated state in the country. When we look at our data on achievement, and we look at our data on discipline in schools, it shows clear disproportionality. We believe that that is not the fault of the children, that we must look at our system and across all of our systems to examine how we can provide a more equitable experience for our students in our schools.
I just don't think that, you know, a 13-year-old girl who happens to be white is going to understand the nuances of what you're saying. They're going to feel that this is their problem, their parents are the problem, this is a system that, the incredible harm. And I do wonder if you looked at the impact, the psychological impact of the kind of blame and shame that you're promoting here, is that it's going to have severe mental health impact? And I just wonder where you guys looked at that? Is that in here anywhere?
We have lots of sports for wellness for our children, and blame and shame are no part of our document.
All right. Well, let me just conclude, that this is, I agree that, you know, the last year, the rules implemented by COVID, some I think were extremely wrong and bad and harmful, negatively impacted our children. And the idea of money coming from the feds to help alleviate that, that's fine, I guess. But just like many liberals say, never let a crisis go to waste, they're using it not for math and English and things that make sense about how to kind of help alleviate the problems, they're using it to push this diabolical Marxist idea of Critical Race Theory, which has nothing to do with what happened in this past year. So it's clearly, I mean, this is what the left does, pushing universal preschool has nothing to do with it as well. But yeah, the CRT is just really, really problematic, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. President Albrecht, Ms. Lipton, Ms. Snyder, Dr. Pugh, in that order.
Thank you. First of all, just a reminder to please, when we invite guests to the State Department of Education and we ask them questions, please allow them to answer their questions. I also want to thank you for taking the time to come and present this to us today. I think you already answered my question, but I will just say this, I was a 13-year-old girl at one time, and I do remember learning about racism and the history of this country. And I can tell you, I did not internalize it, but it did open my eyes to a lot of different things, which I appreciate. And so I will leave it there. I think it's, I don't think education is meant to hurt anybody or to shame anyone. It is simply to introduce facts and understandings that people can utilize as they need to for their own personal growth. The question that I had, and I think you answered it, was what are the next steps with this? You've shared it with local districts, is that it for your committee, or do you guys have additional work that you're now going to do?
I appreciate the question. We've partnered with some of our associations, such as the Superintendent Association, School Board Association, principals' associations, to really create plans for operationalizing recovery plans, because we know our school leaders, school board members are, they've been through a lot this year, and they're somewhat cooked. And so to now go from, we just ended the school year, summer's still finishing up, to now create visions for the next three years, there just isn't a lot of the energy to do that, people need a break. So to the degree that we can kind of pave the way a little bit forward and support them, we'll do that. And so our advisory council has been working with member organizations to try to provide supports for school leaders and school boards that are wanting that level of support. In addition, there's advocacy work to be done. We know that the significant surplus of funds that the consensus revenue estimating conference showed for the state, but also how to best use the federal funds, is still up for debate in the legislature and the governor's office. And so advocacy around the blueprint and the policy recommendations is a part of our work as well.
Thank you, President Albrecht. Ms. Lipton, Ms. Snyder, Dr. Pugh, in that order.
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. I read the blueprint and can see the hard work that went into putting this document together, and I do appreciate you coming in, putting some meat on the bones, so to speak, in terms of the report. the bones, uh, so to speak, in terms of the report. Um, I have two questions. One question, if you could, um, just give me, I, I, I'm just not familiar. You referenced opportunities, I'm sorry, you referenced innovation zones in a couple places. And, um, I, I'm just not familiar with what that is. Um, is that something that is, was passed by the legislature or is that like a term of art that I'm, I'm just not familiar with? If you could, um, just help me with that, um, put some more context into it because it's just, as I said, I'm just not familiar with that concept.
Yeah, so innovation zones have been discussed by previous legislatures. Uh, there is a bill introduced by Representative Paquette, who is actually one of the representatives that served, uh, on the advisory council, uh, related to innovation zones. There are states across the country, including Colorado, New Hampshire, Nevada, um, that have flexibility built in for innovation to occur. And so the, the premise is, is that some of the accountability measures that are in place right now limit districts' ability to be innovative. And so how can schools have more flexibility to design their programs around the needs of their students or really to try doing things different, whether it's in a competency-based model or whether it's in, you know, interdisciplinary type actions? And, and there are more things that we can do than what we can't, even with under the current, you know, conditions, because there's been greater flexibility, uh, provided. But there's also this, you know, I'll say, you know, concern about if we're trying something new. And in, you know, I spoke with, uh, a member from, you know, the business community that, uh, was in pharmaceuticals. I asked, you know, how long does it take to bring a new, you know, product to market? Well, we, you know, seven to 10 years. And initially there's, you know, some setbacks or some false starts, uh, you know? And so if we're truly going to design new systems, you know, we have to have the opportunity to, you know, kind of have a little bit of a sandbox where we don't have some of those, you know, traditional, um, elements, uh, in place to try new things. And we believe those should not come top-down, that innovation best happens closest to the children in the unique, uh, conditions of our community. So the idea is to promote, um, research and development, growth and new ideas so that we can scale ideas across the state once they're developed.
Okay, I just, okay, thank you so much. I, I just want to make sure that I, that I, that I understand, um, what you said. So this is, this is, it's a legislative idea that was put forth by Representative Paquette, who served on the committee, but this is not in state law currently. Is, is that?
You're a hundred percent.
I mean, I served in the legislature and I, I, I tried to keep abreast of, I mean, you can't know everything, but it's just not something that I was familiar with in current state law. So this is an idea and it's, it's the subject of a pending bill? Is, is that what you're saying? In other words, I could?
Yep, you're correct. Yes.
Okay, but it's not currently in state law. This is an idea that.
You're right. It, it isn't in state law, but I would say, you know, some of the movement, uh, of the department, um, has even been to look at, you know, for instance, um, when we look at the Common Core state standards and, and you look at the content areas of which they're within that, you know, one course could teach content standards for, you know, multiple, you know, subject areas. And, and that's been, you know, that idea in itself is innovation. Uh, and so having, I think we're moving along those lines, but this would be something to try it, uh, in policy to really promote it throughout our state.
Okay, so that, that's very helpful because I can, I can take a look at the bill and, and see, because sometimes when things are labeled as zones, I assume that there's certain criteria in order to be designated such a zone, um, um, and, and whatnot. So, okay, so that is, it's, you, you've answered that. Great, thank you so much. The second question I had was, um, uh, one of the things that I am, um, very interested in is something that you said and this mention of, um, since we do have a local control system, in other words, as in other states, um, the state board of education or the department, um, has the authority to, um, to issue missives that then flow down. We have the opposite. And so as, as you know, a local controlled state means that, um, that, 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 uh, education is, the, the belief that education is best done with, with recognition of the local community and the local needs. And there's certainly strength to that. Of course, oftentimes, as you suggested, the idea of managing 800-plus different school districts can, can sometimes be, um, sort of monumental, particularly in view of the Would this blueprint be something that school districts, and there's no requirement that school districts, um, have a strategic plan, um, in place? I mean, it's certainly a good idea, but there's no requirement in statute. Um, might this blueprint be something that could form the basis for the formation or the actual, um, adoption of a strategic plan by an individual district that could perhaps even, dare I say, align with the state's strategic plan? And at least have some notion that, uh, if not things coming from top-down, at least all of the voices are perhaps talking around the same issues, um, in your professional opinion?
Well, we, the approach we've tried to take is how can we incentivize good behavior? Uh, and we say good behavior, it's making best use of the funds that research and evidence suggest to provide the holistic, comprehensive recovery for our children. And that's what this blueprint is designed to do. Um, and to the degree that you can make those connections across, you know, so collaboration is a way to incentivize this type of behavior, you know? And, and so that's why we're partnering with associations so that school districts can have the tools and resources necessary to create the type of plans that you're speaking of. Every district that receives federal funds will have to create a spending plan, um, that, uh, the department will evaluate to make sure that it aligns to the allowable uses, uh, and, um, you know, the, the fidelity to what the legislation was from Congress. So if they're going to have to create a plan like that, we believe it's best to support them with the resources necessary to do so. So that's been our approach.
I just, just want to make sure I understand. So this, this could in fact be sort of the basis or, or perhaps, you know, make the undertaking of a strategic plan by a, a local school district perhaps a bit more easy?
That's entirely the idea is to make sure that, you know, we've done, I believe, the heavy lifting. Again, when you, when you bring 80 people from across the state that all had other things to do, other jobs, they weren't looking for more to do, and they saw the incredible value by us coming together to support every educator, every child in the state, uh, I, I sure hope districts find use to this.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Ms. Snyder, then, Vice President Pugh.
Just a, a few things. I'm trying to keep my thoughts organized. Um, the first thing, I would say, you know, at one point in time, you said it would be incredibly cumbersome to create one's own plan. This is kind of piggybacking onto some of what Ellen was just talking about. Um, and in relationship to CRT and the concept of white supremacy, I, I only want to ask now at this point in time, what specifically is disproportionate for each district and how will this plan balance that? And I think a follow-up, um, discussion, keeping it specific to K-12 education will help me to better understand how, how you're thinking and this group's thinking and this administration's thinking is what the blueprint will carry out for those local school districts. Because it's one thing to say, oh, we're a local controlled state, but we still think it would be incredibly cumbersome for you to actually make your own decisions. It's, it's like, okay, hold on, let's, let's sift through what that really means. Um, so I'm hoping there's follow-up discussion in that so that I can really understand specifically what the administration is, is speaking to in creating that balance. The second thing is, um, the language around learning loss as opposed to unfinished learning. Um, you know, I'm going to advocate for students here when I say that, uh, although learning loss doesn't feel comfortable to admit, it really is a loss for them. What's happened over the last 18 months is a loss for them. It's a significant, significant loss for them. And when we use the words unfinished learning, um, back to that whole blame situation, it's not appropriate to say you didn't finish something that the adults didn't offer. Um, and so that's part of, in my opinion, part of the issue of opportunity is how do you have, have the opportunity if the adults are not offering it? So unfinished learning is just, I just don't know. I, I don't tend to think that I would, I would use those terms when I'm speaking to students. Um, I would rather, uh, speak to them from their perspective, which is that they had, they have a really great loss on their hands that they've experienced in the last 18 months. And I don't want to underscore what they're thinking and feeling and what they've gone through as we rebuild. And then the third, um, discussion, which, um, I feel very passionate about is the CRT thing. And this is, this is going to continue to roll out over the next several months and years, but, um, and the reason why I'm willing to discuss it so overtly at this point in time is because it's happening even in our board. It just doesn't, there isn't space for multiple perspectives and all realities and truths to be honored. It just, it's not how we continue to communicate with each other and it's what we continue to see even in our education system. What I'd like to share with, with the group is just a short excerpt from a journalist who has researched over a thousand incidents of CRT being carried out in school districts around the country and how the language that we're talking about when we say white supremacy and different things really does impact kids and kids do internalize it. So he says, "This year, I produced another series of reports focused on critical race theory in education. In Cupertino, California, an elementary school forced first graders to deconstruct their racial and sexual identities and rank themselves according to their power and privilege. In Springfield, Missouri, a middle school forced teachers to locate themselves on an oppression matrix based on the idea that straight, white, English-speaking Christian males are members of the oppressor class and must atone for their privilege and covert white supremacy. In Philadelphia, an elementary school forced fifth graders to celebrate black communism and simulate a black power rally to free 1960s radical Angela Davis from prison, where she had once been held on charges of murder. And in Seattle, the school district told white teachers that they are guilty of spirit murder against black children and must bankrupt their privilege in acknowledgement of their thieved inheritance." All of this sounds crazy and radical and gosh, is it true? And maybe distant. Um, and again, as of late, I've started to share a little bit more of myself, but I have an 11-year-old daughter who is just accused of being racist because her Roblox avatar skin tone color was uncomfortable for the other young girl she was playing with. And she didn't just accuse her of racism, she used words like cultural appropriation. She used words like oppression. She used words like white men are filthy. I would share the text conversation with all of you today to, for you to understand that it is right here with us. It's not some random thing that's happening that isn't true or that, gosh, this isn't, this isn't something we need to take seriously because, you know, local school districts will do what they're going to do with this plan and I just don't think that's really what's happening. It is what's happening. But I respect the fact that this young girl doesn't really even know what she's saying. She's not, she doesn't have the capacity to really understand that her comments aren't necessarily rooted in truth, they're not being received well, and they're not appropriate. And when you say things like this to young children, they learn to hate themselves, they do not understand it. And the concept of implicit bias, which we have started to give local school districts grants and funds to carry out, what we're seeing in these conversations is a one-direction implicit bias conversation, not two directions, not all directions. We are hearing the stories of people who are dealing with those things on a daily basis. So while some of us don't internalize it, most of us do. This is not, to our guests' honor, and just trying to be very specific about, um, about what you've shared with us today and to engage appropriately, this is not safe. This is not equitable. This is not an environment where trust is developed. This is not an education. And so I sure hope that as we move forward and you encourage this blueprint, that you're willing to have the full discussion, that I just only scratched the surface on here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Uh, Dr. Pugh, to you for a comment.
Again, apologies for not being able to work my view. Um, you know, I don't even know where to begin. This is just such, um, a heavy conversation, but of course, we knew it would, uh, this morning. It, it started off, uh, heavy, but you know, this, uh, concept of critical race theory is not necessarily new. Um, it's, it's been around for some time. I think that one of the things that we have had that has been emboldened is, uh, the resistance to, uh, equity. Um, and so I think that that has come, especially with the last administration. Of course, there are those who have been awakened after, um, the murder of George Floyd, um, uh, due to systems that, that are, that are inequitable. Um, and I really focus on making sure that our children learn their history, uh, myself, at my age, learn history so that history is not repeating itself. I really, myself, I've been interested in reading about the Reconstruction Era because this almost seems like a Reconstruction Era. It almost seems like we've gone through a civil war, um, and, and then with COVID added and then this opportunity for, um, this opportunity to rebuild, uh, our country and to rebuild better and for the administration to be calling for rebuild and rebuild better. But I, I just really want to, um, focus on that, is that I think that this is an opportunity for us to make sure that we get history right, that we set a course that's better for the, um, people, especially those people, as, as Martin Luther King said, have been in waiting, uh, for so long for justice and equity. Get that right, but also for those future, uh, generations so that they can have the hard conversations in, uh, safe spaces such as schools with nurturing educators. And Tom, to your question, I think you asked the question about systemic racism and, and what, you know, what proof do we have? And you know, again, speaking to Martin Luther King, uh, there's just a lot of unfinished business that, that is out there. You know, when we look at Dred Scott, uh, back, I think it was 1857, uh, where, uh, black people, my ancestors were told, um, that we were less than a person, um, and that we were not citizens within the constitution. And we can talk about the emancipation, uh, of, of slaves, but we can also talk about, uh, you know, the 13th Amendment, the 14th Amendment, but then we also have to talk about the black, uh, the black codes and Jim Crow-ism, um, and the things that my family and other families moving to the north to escape, um, the dangers of the south. Uh, I'm not that far removed. My family is, is right there in Mississippi. Um, and we talk about, um, some of the things that happened there. I go, we go and we see the hanging bridge. These are all reminders that our systems were built on racism. It doesn't go away right away. No, especially not when, at every opportunity we've had to address slavery and all of the pre, uh, remnants of slavery, uh, ever, we've had resistance to, uh, removing, um, those systems of, of slavery. And so here, here we are, um, again, at this opportunity, um, to really, uh, make some aggressive stances at moving that out of the way. Um, and I understand, we do need to have, make sure that children can be in safe environments to have these conversations, um, because we don't want any child to be traumatized like children, BIPOC children, uh, black children, uh, families, uh, have been traumatized by racism in and of itself, systems of racism in and of itself. Uh, but we do want to make sure that we give those children who have been traumatized by that, this opportunity. And we want to make sure that we give all of our children the opportunity to right the wrongs of our history that was, that were built on systems of racism. And there's tons of proof of that.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Um, other board member comments or questions? Mr. McMillan? Mr. McMillan.
Thank you. I'll just conclude by saying I don't blame Mr. Paulson for not wanting to address my questions about where he feels or the group felt that there's white supremacist systems. I know President Albrecht appreciated the racial issues, and I imagine that was good. But I doubt she was called a white supremacist and that her parents were part of a system of white supremacy. And if that were the case, how she would have taken that. And also not wanting to talk about the other section I brought up, unconscious bias, and how you're going to talk to young children about, which this advocates for in your blueprint, advocates for talking about. So I would really strongly urge you, Mr. Paulson, to, you know, I know the governor has endorsed all these thoughts, which is amazing and very disturbing. But I would urge you to really rethink, and maybe you can reconvene and pull out some of these very nefarious links because this is nothing to do with creating safe environment, like Nikki said. I mean, you know, and I'm just going to end with four paragraphs from an article, "Critical Race Theory Is A Classic Communist Divide-and-Conquer Tactic." It says, "Of all the ways identity politics is used as a tool to sow hatred among people, where there should be the potential for friendship, critical race theory is one of the gravest offenders. Every person of goodwill should know that judging people based on their physical characteristics is cruel and wrong. This is not the nature of critical race theory, however. Rather, the insidious ideology is being used to promote estrangement rather than friendship and hostility rather than goodwill. Indeed, the tactics used by the Bolsheviks." It goes on to say, "Indeed, agitators who deploy critical race theory have zero interest in ending racism. Instead, they've made it essentially the same point over and over again. Racism is an unsolvable problem. If you've been tainted as white, there's nothing you can do about it. You are eternally a racist, especially if you don't believe you are." And then finally, conjuring up such hostilities is also the essence of what Karl Marx was aiming for in his call for clash consciousness. The problem, as he saw it, was the people were busy with life and willing to live and let live. Or to put it in modern terminology, they were sufficiently unwoke. All-power elites likewise see social contentment as an impediment to their power. And the saddest of all is how critical race theory exploits the tragedy of racial divisions in America. The tragedy is thus reduced to nothing but a vehicle for a power grab by elites in the circles of academia, media, and big tech. Ironically, those power elites are vastly and disproportionately white and in it for their own gain. So rather than serve as a balm for healing, critical race theory has proven to be poisonous to liberty, true community. I have created, my legislation created the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, where $100 million a year is now helping primarily, or, you know, large disproportion. I advocated for a lot of criminal justice reform, and I've always advocated for like opposing A through F and things that really harm inner-city kids and inner-city schools. So, I mean, I understand that there are issues that we need to deal with. But this area of critical race theory, that these links are clearly going to organizations that openly promote it, needs to be removed from this blueprint. And, you know, I think the governor needs to answer for why she would be supporting such toxic and horrible things. And then I hope we're not going to start telling districts that this is where they should spend their money. I suspect that teachers are going to say, I don't want to deal with this stuff that's in the blueprint. We need to bring in, you know, community activists. So the left, you know, the hardcore leftists will come in and be paid tons of money from these $4, $5 billion that we're getting dumped on. And then they're going to be able to open the door and have access to all these kids and cause all kind of problems. So that's, yeah, I am passionate. This really pisses me off, quite frankly. And, you know, so that's all I'd say. So I really hope you'll reconsider.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Dr. Pritchett, a comment slash question.
Thank you. I guess I just want to keep the lens on that these are recommendations. And I do appreciate the work that the group did in a very short period of time as they looked at many, many issues facing our school districts. Michigan is a strong, very strong local control state. We have witnessed that throughout the years. And so, again, I appreciate the fact that you have put forth some things that districts can use if they believe that that's what they need. I appreciate Ellen's comments about might be a stepping point, at least sections of it, for districts to build a strategic plan, if that's indeed what they believe they need to do at this point. I do have one question, comment, maybe more of a comment on the innovation zones. I just want us to be very, very careful. Sometimes when districts or decide that they want to innovate, the students get lost in the process. And I just want to make sure that as we move forward with that, and I am all about looking at the current system and meeting the needs of individual students. I don't have an issue with that at all. So I don't want this to be misconstrued. But I also need to throw out the fact that I would expect us to all remain on the same level playing field and make sure that whatever innovative program that is going forward in a district is well researched and that the students truly are benefiting from it, that there be some sort of an evaluation. I'm not going to use the word assessment because the last thing we need is more tests for kids. But some sort of an evaluation. When you start talking about innovation zones and possibly adjusting pupil accounting rules, it makes me a little bit nervous because, again, I don't want the students to get lost in the process here. So, and I'm not pointing fingers. I'm not saying anybody would do that. But that would be my only request at this point. So, but I do appreciate the work of the group. Thank you.
You're on mute.
That was a gift that kept on giving. Dr. Pugh, to you for the benediction.
Tom, you were breaking up, so I did not hear everything that you said. So I'll have to, I heard bits and pieces, so hopefully, you know, we can catch up. And to Judy's points, those were great points. My thought, my parting thought is just around the responsibility of the State Board of Education and Michigan Department of Education. And I know that you said that the panel did consult with Kyle or kept him in the loop. And I guess my point, and I guess this could be a question, just making sure that we were very intricately involved, tightly involved in what came out in the publication because I definitely see some duplications there. But just maybe that was, again, intentional. I think you said you wanted to make sure it aligned. So just, I guess, a question and just thought, making sure of how we're keeping MDE and SVE, or the State Board, more than in the loop, but at the table. And making sure we're not going out to other states and bringing things that maybe have already been tried here. And we might have better insight as to how that works here on the ground, right here in Michigan.
Yeah, Dr. Rice, I can answer some of that if there's anything else, you know, feel free. At the onset of the creation of the Student Recovery Advisory Council, because Dr. Rice has regular contact with the governor's office, so the representative, you know, engaged with Dr. Rice about how to best keep the department apart of the advisory council's work. And that's where I decided to have Kyle liaise between. Dr. Rice was briefed at various points on the work of the council prior to release and, you know, with a key eye on how does the work of the advisory council align to the state strategic plan. And so I think there's some intentional pieces you can see along the way there because we don't need competing ideas within our own state. We need to speak with one voice to the degree we can. And I think you see that throughout the document.
Any other questions or comments from state board members? Hearing and seeing none. Superintendent Paulson, thank you very much for your presentation today. We appreciate you being here and soldiering through.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. I deeply believe in the work of our educators and appreciate your support.
Thank you. So we're at that point in the meeting, the approval of minutes of regular committee of the whole meeting of May 11, 2021. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 11, 2021 meeting?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any discussion, hearing none? Marilyn, if you could do a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahan?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Tilly? Did I hear yes?
Mm-hmm.
Albridge?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the work session of May 18, 2021?
So moved.
I have a motion somewhat delayed. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion, hearing none? Marilyn, if you could do the roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahan?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. We're at that point in the agenda where we hear the report to the president, Dr. Albridge.
Thank you. A few things. First, I want to apologize for missing a portion of the meeting this morning. As some of you may know, Secretary Cardona was in Dearborn earlier today. And I took a few minutes to say hello on behalf of the board and to welcome him to Michigan. And I want to thank the Henry Ford College for allowing me to participate in today's welcome event. I understand that I missed a very important vote by doing this, and that was to recognize and honor Sheila Ellis for her 46 years of serving children in the state of Michigan and the work she's done with the Michigan Department of Education. I served as the president at a difficult time of Brian's passing, and Sheila stepped in and really led this board and this department with grace and distinction. And I, for one, am very sorry to see her go. But she has definitely earned this well-deserved retirement. And all I ask Sheila is that you stay in touch and you keep us in mind as you are enjoying yourself in whatever endeavors you choose to do next. So thank you. As you know, Sheila was the first, but certainly won't be the last, woman to serve as the superintendent of Public Instruction of Michigan. And I am sure that she has many stories to tell about how she became a leader. But I have one of my own that I'd like to share from my own experience. My freshman year in high school, I decided that I wanted to play tennis. And as many of you know, I attended a small rural high school here in Michigan, and we only had one tennis team, and that was the boys' team. And a friend of mine and I decided to try out for the team anyway. And on the first day of tryouts, the coach sat everyone down and declared that any girl who is not a senior would not be permitted to continue. He explained that the school was creating a girls' tennis club the following year, and we could play on that. And we were literally told to get up and walk out of the gym. If you've ever seen the movie Pitch Perfect, there's a humiliating scene where two girls are excused from the ensemble, and they're made to drag their chair to the door as they're leaving just to enhance their shame and embarrassment. Well, that was us, except instead of dragging chairs, we were carrying tennis rackets. This would have been less than 20 years after Title IX, which, of course, at the time, I had never heard of. So it didn't occur to me that I had actual rights, and those rights had probably just been violated. But I'm guessing someone at the school figured it out because the following year, despite the fact that there was now a girls' tennis club, girls were once again welcome to try out for the boys' tennis team. And I made the team. And I did so again my junior year. And by my senior year, I was the captain of the team. I was the captain of the boys' tennis team. So why am I telling you this story? Because I was reading Senate Bill 218, and it didn't take long because it's less than a page long. And some of the media coverage regarding this bill, if you haven't read the bill, the language could not be more simple. It says, "If a school designates a team as a boys' or a girls' team, you can only play on that team if you have the requisite biological parts. No exceptions." And this apparently, according to media coverage, is to protect girls. Well, I didn't have those parts. And my playing on the boys' tennis team in high school did not trample on the women's rights movement. If anything, it strengthened it. Nor was it the existential threat that some are making it out to be today. This bill would actually take opportunities away from girls. If this bill were law when I was in high school, that shameful decision made my freshman year would have transcended my entire high school career. I never would have found my love for tennis or made the lifelong friends that I did or married my husband, who actually played on the tennis team with me, and we've now been together for 30 years. And according to Bridge Magazine, nearly 800 girls played on boys' high school teams in Michigan last year, including an average of two transgendered players each year. Every single one of those athletes will be disenfranchised under this bill. So the point is, my presence on that team in high school did not hurt me, and it did not hurt the boys that I played with, and that remains true today. We were simply a bunch of kids who wanted to play a sport. And that is why I vehemently disagree with this bill and all the negative consequences, whether intended or not, that will come from it. Speaking of disenfranchisement, I have one more thing to say. We learned of yet another attempt by the legislature to determine the makeup of this board that has been introduced and received a hearing earlier today. I'm sure we will discuss Senate Bill 121 during legislative section. But I just wanted to say that I take it as a sign of great pride that certain members of the legislature are so fixated on controlling the board and determining who gets to run for it that it is clear we are doing something right. And that concludes my remarks for today. Thank you.
Thank you, President Albridge. Reported the state superintendent. I did get my oar in the water substantially this morning. I do want to mention two things, though, briefly. The governor this afternoon announced her plan to expand preschool to the remaining 22,000-plus four-year-old students eligible for the Great Start Readiness Program for our award-winning GSRP program but who receive neither GSRP services nor four-year-old Head Start services. Prior to the pandemic, for a number of years, approximately 37,000 four-year-olds received GSRP services, and another 5,000 received Head Start services. 22,000 remained and remain without either a Great Start or a Head Start. They receive an inadequate start to their education. I was pleased about the governor's announcement today. Board, the announced plan is very much part of our state's top 10 strategic education plan, specifically goal number one, the expansion of GSRP to all eligible children. As you recall, you approved the state's top 10 strategic education plan last August. The announcement is associated closely as well with the first of the seven gifts that keep on giving that I shared as recommendations for local school districts and the state legislature, legislature, both in video and in department guidance. I am hopeful that the same state legislature that doubled the number of preschool slots during the Snyder administration will see fit to provide it universally as we come out of the pandemic. Board, our state GSRP program is top-ranked nationally, along with a handful of other states. We're 21st in the nation, however, in terms of access. The governor's plan can help bridge that gap between top quality and 21st in the nation in access. We should be first in terms of quality, first in terms of access with respect to preschool. You want to improve early literacy. One of the best ways to do it is to expand early childhood education to all eligible children within the state of Michigan. Then the only other thing that I'd like to share is an appreciation to all of our young people, of all of our students, all of our educators, all of our parents and grandparents and guardians who soldiered through a very, very difficult school year this year. We've had a number of graduations. We're still completing some in the state. Kudos to all those of you who are moving on to the next level. Congratulations on your graduations. Best of luck as you move on to the next steps in your education. I'm cognizant of the fact that many school districts notwithstanding the fact that people are legitimately tired after a very, very challenging school year, are planning, have planned, and are about to begin expanded summer programs for their young people. I had the opportunity recently to communicate with Dr. Glenn Maleko, the superintendent in Dearborn, outstanding superintendent of the third-largest district in the state. And he mentioned how their preschool is being planned. He anticipated for more than 5,000 young people this summer, an eight-week summer program, the most embellished program that he had ever had as a superintendent in the summer for young people. And recall that the seventh gift that keeps on giving that I shared with the board, with local school district leaders, and with state legislature was time. Our young people need more time. They've foregone time in the pandemic. They need more of it moving forward. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to share those brief reflections with you. Mr. Owen Bondano, the 2020-2021 Michigan Teacher of the Year, will present his report at this time. Mr. Bondano teaches English Language Arts to freshmen in Oak Park Schools. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Mr. Bondano, welcome again.
Hello. Let me grab, excuse me, grab my slides real quick. This is, this will be my last presentation to the board, which is strange and sad, but it is what it is, right? So, and also, this is the first time I'll be presenting to you just me. No one else, no regional teachers of the year, just me. So prepare yourself for the experience, I guess. So back in September, when I gave one of my first presentations, oops, apologies, society interrupted, there we go, I did kind of a summation of what I could gather from teachers across the state of how they were feeling as we entered a school year unlike any other. So I thought for my last official presentation that I would give a reflection on that year like any other, unlike any other, rather, and where we've come, because a lot has changed since September. So I wanted to talk about some of those things. No matter what model teachers were teaching in this year, everybody was teaching during a pandemic, and I think teaching will forever be changed by what was experienced this year. And some of those changes I'm quite excited by. So on this slide, we've got three images of how technology has been used in my classroom in the last couple of years. The first photo, we've got a bunch of students in my classroom pre-pandemic. They're using technology. In this case, they're competing with each other to review some concepts and how to write an argument. And at this point, technology in my classroom was very much sort of an extra or an add-on model. It was used to increase engagement, to practice some of those technology skills that we know young people need, but it was always in addition to the curriculum, not embedded within it. The first arrow points you to a photo of me teaching from my home, that quick pivot that all teachers had to make in March of 2020. And tech suddenly went from being that extra add-on model to being a foundation of what we do. We struggled, almost all districts struggled to equip our students with the technology they needed and with the skills to effectively use that technology in the face of what education had become. And the last photo is me very recently in my classroom. Even though I have a few in-person students in my classroom, I have so few of them in person that I'm essentially still teaching virtually, just from the setting of my classroom instead of from my home. And it's a model that combines all of my new technology proficiencies with the school building and its resources. And so I've learned some technology lessons in this last year. How do we make tech central to our students' education? How do we use learning management systems to provide benefits that they can have even when we go back to what may look more familiar as a school year? Students have seen real-life examples of adults like me, problem-solving, learning new skills, having a growth mindset. I haven't gotten it right every day, and we've learned together what that is. And students have quickly upgraded their comfort level with technology. Before, most of their technology comfort was in using technology for entertainment. And now so many more of my students can troubleshoot technology problems, they're comfortable trying new things, they use tech in a way that's much more real-world integrated and the way that they're actually going to use it as adults. And it's much more so than during that add-on model that was used previously. And this is one of the reasons why I complicate the idea of learning loss during the pandemic, because yes, students have lost opportunities and learning has looked different, but they have also learned skills that they would not have learned pre-pandemic. And there is a lot of learning happening that we simply aren't measuring and don't know how to measure. There's a phrase that there is no tired, like end-of-the-year-teaching-tired, and this year, that is compounded in a way we've never seen before. These are some tweets that communicate the experience that is currently nearly universal in education. The very top one is from Carol Lohe, last year's Michigan Teacher of the Year, and she talks about falling asleep in the shampoo chair at the salon because she's never been this tired before. We've got one, we've got a lot of different themes that come out in these tweets, but things like being excited for the first time for a school year to end, to get to that ending point, and to use the summer to rest and return back to the level we know we should be at. The frustration that students aren't doing anything. They're just as tapped out as we are, and it's awful. Jessica Matthews, one of the regional teachers of the year from last year, Region 10, said, "That moment, you have to juggle grieving the news of yet another death of a former student and senior grades. There are so many complications to teaching this year that are unique to this year." And we have to remember that the kids aren't giving us a hard time, even if it feels like us, they are having unmet needs, and behavior is communication. This is one of the reasons why districts are having such a hard time staffing summer school, including my district. Many districts have upped compensation. They've made other offers to try to entice people into working over the summer, but they're up against some of the worst burnout that modern teachers have experienced. And for many of those incentives that are being offered don't overcome their need for rest this summer. And it's not just the teachers, it's also the students. I have my students check in with me every week on a Google form, and some of that form is an academic check-in, and some of it is a social-emotional check-in. And so these quotes are all from one simple question, which is just, "Is there anything else you want to share with me?" And I'm constantly getting responses like these about how tired they are and out of it, how they've fallen behind, but they're assuring me they'll catch up soon, they're having a hard time focused, being focused, they're so tired, they're full of stress, they're battling technology issues and connectivity still here at the end of the year, they're feeling overwhelmed and behind, they're experiencing all the same burnout that teachers are currently feeling. Let me switch slides. There we go. However, forced innovation is still innovation, and there's a ton of stuff that we have learned as teachers during this year despite our exhaustion. And many of us teachers recognize our professional growth that we have experienced over this year. In some cases, we've been reminded about what's really important in teaching. Two of these tweets say that. Teaching has always been and will always be about building strong relationships. For example, this year, students have learned the importance of togetherness, adaptability, appreciation, resilience, acceptance, self-care, inner contentment. Our kids are all right. And other ways that we have learned new ways of structuring our classrooms and structuring learning that use technology and more effectively reach our students, and will be taking those skills with us hopefully for the rest of our teaching careers. Here, we've got an example of someone who wants to experiment with never lecturing again, but using technology instead, and someone else who is talking about how not only has this year been tough, but for many of us, we did some of our most creative, complex, compassionate, patient, technical, and important work of our careers, and that we can do better next year. And our students, too, despite their own tiredness, are also experiencing benefits and seeing some positives. I've been surveying my students regularly at multiple points throughout the years, specifically about what is and is not working for them, about virtual learning, so I can make adjustments as we went. And these are some responses from my most recent survey, which was mid-May, to the question, "What worked for you this school year?" So students really liked that they have more time to think in this capacity. The learning management system, in my case, that's Google Classroom, allows them to have complete control over their own academics. They can see exactly what's missing. They don't lose paperwork because it's all online. They don't forget about it because it's there to remind them. It gives them a level of organization and control that's hard to achieve with just paper. Some students really liked office hours and getting that one-on-one time with me whenever they needed it. And even still, even with the positives, some students couldn't help but reiterate some of those negatives. If I could focus better online would be better than in-person school, but I just can't focus at home. What I will take from pandemic teaching, obviously, I can only speak from my own practices and experiences, but there are definitely things that worked for me that I'm going to continue doing. I like that even if I have less breadth of content, I can get more depth. I want to continue integrating more student choice and collaboration, more avenues for our students to participate. The chat has been wonderful for students who are nervous or shy to get their voice heard in the classroom, and my mind is already spinning with ways that I can recreate those avenues in a non-Zoom setting. More resource curating. It's great to have my learning management system be a place where students can go back and get more information, re-watch things, take things at their own pace, relearn tasks when they've forgotten them. So that curating of resources, I think, is something I'm going to continue to do moving forward. Trying new things and using student feedback. I've never, as much as I have this year, not only tried new things, but said to the students, "Did this work for you? What did you like? What did you didn't like?" And I've learned so much about what works for them that I want to keep doing that forever. Less emphasis on deadlines and more emphasis on mastery. We've all been told over and over again in this pandemic that we need to have grace, and that is very true. And for me, part of having that grace is, did you learn the material? The deadline's not what's important. Whether you learn the material is what's important, and that's a thing I'd like to take with me moving forward as well. As I said before, I can only speak to what's happening in my own classroom with authority, but it's my hope that all teachers will be reflective about what we've learned this year and how they can keep things that worked well for them and their students moving forward. And I hope that teachers, especially after the rest and the reflection of the summer, won't want to return to what we did in the past just because it's how we've always been, always done it. I'm reminded specifically of my grandmother, who is, photo you can see here on the screen. Her name was Olivia Bondano, and Grandma Lee wanted to be a teacher, but the money wasn't there for her to go to college. So she worked a number of jobs, and eventually she became a secretary for Maple Heights Schools in Ohio. And that job allowed her to serve students in whatever capacity she could. However, in the early 90s, computers were becoming a necessary part of the workplace, and she was finally given an option. Would she learn to use a computer, or would she retire early? And as a woman at that point in her early 70s, she took the retirement package. And we're again in a place, I think, where we can take advantage of integrating technology into a new, more authentic way in our schools, and teachers need to meet that challenge or allow others who are going to meet that challenge to take those positions. This lesson can also be extended beyond our individual classrooms and schools. As a state, we really can't afford to return to models of education that were limiting in the past. Education is experiencing some growth pains right now. We're moving to a model of education that is no longer the model to create our employees and factory workers. Instead, our American model of education is moving towards creating a body of critical thinkers who can operate in a professional world that values different skills, you know, collaboration over memorization, process skills over the final product. And those, and there are those who are resistant to that change. We've seen across the country bills and laws that would keep schools from expanding to meet our modern needs. And here in Michigan, we've already discussed several of them. One is that Senate Bill 218, which would replace the Michigan High School Athletics Association policy with a sweeping transphobic law that would prohibit transgender high school kids from playing on the team that aligns to their gender identity. The Michigan High School Athletics Association policy already adequately handles the issue. It makes case-by-case determinations for transgender athletes, and that's the best option, because different sports value different physical characteristics, and there's no one body type that describes all transgender bodies. Case-by-case evaluation is the best way, to be fair to all of our young athletes, whether they're transgender or cisgender. All that this state bill, 218, would accomplish is making a less effective policy while communicating a disdain for our transgender youth. It's an attempt by some to move away from the equity within our society that we are moving towards. And I want to thank the board president for speaking earlier on yet another reason why that bill is unfair for all students. We've also had multiple discussions today about ostensibly both the roadmap and also Senate Bill 460, which would threaten schools that don't whitewash American culture and history. And according to that law, schools would have a portion of their funding withheld for teaching that some races in our country have been and are oppressed. I teach black kids. My district's population is 97% African-American, and as an English teacher to black ninth graders, part of my job is giving them the language to describe their experiences in our world. We write about our lives and our experiences. We read about people with experiences both similar and different to our own. And it would be impossible for me to honor the experiences of my students while ignoring their experiences of racism and the history of racism that has shaped their communities, their families, and their lives. For years, these practices were called cultural competency in the classroom, and we encouraged our teachers to develop that. But those who oppose talking about race in schools underestimate our students' ability to grapple with the world as it stands, all of its beautiful complexity and its faults, and the importance of cultivating those conversations. Those who oppose this find discomfort in those conversations. They find it frightening, and they don't want us to have them. However, in the words of the author Lauren Moorel, "I don't know how to explain to you that you should care about other people." As a state, we have to keep moving forward. We have to strive for more equitable schools, whether it be in curriculum, closing the technological divide, or extracurricular opportunities. So in closing, I'm going to thank the board for the many opportunities I've been given as Michigan Teacher of the Year for this last year. As I've said before, my tenure as the Michigan Teacher of the Year has been different from other MTOs because of the pandemic, but it's been an honor to speak forward about teachers in this highly unique school year, and I want to thank you for all that you do for students in our state. And for the last time, I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bondano. We appreciate it. We appreciate your leadership and your voice on behalf of teachers and students, for that matter as well. Thank you. We have a comment from Dr. Pew.
I just wanted to thank you for all that I learned from you in this year, and honestly, I think you should have had a do-over. You should have worked that out. But really do appreciate you and just everything that you were able to still bring here to us through this exhaustive year and pour into your fellow teachers and be their voice. So I just really appreciate that. So we, you've taught us so much in so many different ways in this critical and complicated year on complicated subjects. So thank you, and keep being you.
Thank you, Dr. Pew.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. And Dr. Albridge has written in the chat, "Thank you." Ms. Redinger has written, "As always, a great presentation." Owen. Ellen Lipton, Ms. Lipton, has written, "Thank you. We're so lucky to have you as our Michigan Teacher of the Year." And she has granted you a do-over year. I don't know how she did that. Apparently, she had a wand. Dr. Pritchett has written, "Thank you, Owen. You've served the teachers and students of Michigan well." Amen, amen. Thank you very much for your service. You will be back with us in August.
Yep.
But you will be doing that to hand off the crown and the scepter, if you will.
Yep, can't wait.
Very good. Thank you. Board, we are in the, in the homestretch. The next item on today's agenda is the state and federal legislative update. Mr. Martin Ackley, Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, will begin this presentation. Mr. Ackley will project the draft recommendation to have the Michigan Department of Education prepare a Freedom of Information Act request on charter school financial discovery onto the screen. And as Mr. Ackley is doing that, I think he's, he's getting there right, right now, as he's doing that, Ms. Lipton is chairperson of the board's legislative committee. Is there anything that you would like to say regarding this recommendation before Mr. Ackley reads it into the record? In fact, you want to know something? Let's do it the other way around this time. If Mr. Ackley could read it into the record, and then if you'd care to share... If Mr. Ackley could read it into the record, and then if you'd care to share at that point, that would be great. We'll get a motion on the table, we'll get a second, and then you can perhaps begin the discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. This is a recommendation that the State Board's Legislative Committee approved to bring before the Board, to have MDE prepare FOIA on charter school financial discovery. And it reads, "In response to the request of a member of the State Board of Education following the presentation on growth of charter schools and charter virtual schools, two policy reports from Western Michigan University and the National Education Policy Center by Gary Mirren, Ph.D., Professor of Evaluation, Measurement, and Research, Western Michigan University, at the April 2021 State Board of Education meeting. The State Board's Legislative Committee recommends that the full State Board of Education direct the Michigan Department of Education to research and prepare prior to the end of the summer. Freedom of Information Act FOIA requests of a cross-section of public school academies, PSAs, and education management organizations, EMOs, to help ascertain the extent to which PSAs and EMOs hold and are held to the same standards of financial transparency as traditional public school districts."
You are, you are not audible at this point. You've frozen up, Mr. Ackley.
Oh, I did?
Okay, Ms. Lipton, please. Yeah. You froze, you froze up just as you were, just as you were completing. If we could get a motion in a second, and then, Ms. Lipton, if you could begin the conversation, the discussion, that would be great. Do I have a motion?
Support.
So I have a, I have a motion and, I believe, a second. Who moved that?
Ellen Lipton.
Okay, Ms. Lipton moved it as chair. Who seconded?
Dr. Pugh.
Dr. Pugh, very good. Thank you. It may be, may be an issue on my, on my side. Ms. Lipton to you for discussing.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Rice. I would once again like to take the opportunity to thank the members of the Legislative Committee for discussing and proposing this resolution on this issue that was brought, was referred to the Legislative Committee by President Albrecht. As many of you will recall, we heard a presentation by Dr. Mirren, one of the foremost researchers in the country, on charter schools and management. And he referenced the ability to review a small percentage of documents in order to get a sense of what was going on in terms of PSAs and their EMOs. And the, as, as the body in the state that is constitutionally directed to oversee the policies and practices of all public schools in the state, I think that it would be extremely helpful and necessary for us to have a more complete picture on the sector in the state that is not required to present the somewhat convoluted and complicated relationships between PSAs and EMOs. And so I think that this resolution by the State Board would be a move in the right direction in order for us to better serve all students in the state of Michigan.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Other, other Board members for, for comments or questions. Mr. McMillan, I believe you have one.
Yeah, I have an amendment. After the final sentence, add, quote, "Further due to the severe funding inequities the charter schools face, especially since they cannot receive taxpayer funds for construction of buildings, the State Board of Education also directs the Michigan Department of Education to research and prepare prior to the end of the summer, FOIA requests of a cross-section of traditional public school districts to help ascertain the extent of this unfair inequity the charter schools face compared to traditional public school districts." That's my amendment.
Do you read that for us one more time, please? Yeah. Could you read, could you read it for us one more time, please?
After the final sentence, add, quote, "Further due to the severe funding inequities the charter schools face, especially since they cannot receive taxpayer funds for construction of buildings, the State's Department, or the State Board of Education also directs the Michigan Department of Education to research and prepare prior to the end of the summer, FOIA requests of a cross-section of traditional public school districts to help ascertain the extent of this unfair inequity that charter schools face compared to traditional public school districts." And that, that's the amendment that's also in the comments.
Okay. Thank you. Mask, just a clarifying question. What, what will the, what will the FOIA requests generate regarding our knowledge of traditional public school districts finances that we don't already know?
Michael, is the motion on the floor?
The, the motion is on the floor. It is seconded. We're in discussion, and I'm asking a clarifying question of the person who just spoke. Mr. McMillan, what, what does the, what does the, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand. You've, you've, you've shared that PSAs don't have the ability to, to, to generate capital funds either relative to a bond or a sinking fund. There's, there's no doubt that that's true. I'm trying to understand, what would the FOIA request add to our understanding?
Well, we would get a cross-section of traditional public school districts and how much they're able to utilize, you know, bonding and get a better understanding of the inequity that's going on. It would, you know, that, that are, that is against charter schools. So I think it would give us a better, it's similar to the FOIA request that's being requested here regarding financial transparency. I mean, we all know that they have to abide by the FOIA request laws, just like everybody else does. So there's nothing that we're going to gain, you know, I mean, your, your question would be turned around to the, to this, this first resolution, because we're going to gain nothing that we can't gain from FOIAs anyway. So I mean, I guess you're going to compile, as I understand it, the maker of the original resolution wants you to compile and ascertain the extent to which apparently they're not the same financial transparency, although they have, they have to abide by the same financial transparency laws that traditional public schools. So, yeah, it would be the same, same thing that is being asked in the, in the original.
Well, I think that we're able to discern which school districts have bonds without, without FOIA-ing them. I think we're able to discern which have sinking funds without FOIA-ing them, and by extension...
Hey, wait. Why are you speaking to my emotion? You, you acknowledge there's a second. I don't...
Yeah, I, I hadn't seconded it, and I don't know who did.
Yeah. Okay. So, so you're, you're making that in the form of a motion. Ms. Snyder, are you, are you seconding it?
Unless someone else did, which I didn't hear, so I'll, I'll just verify that first.
I don't believe anyone did.
Okay, yeah, I would second.
Very good. So we're into, we're into discussion. Others, Ms., Dr. Albrecht.
I, I wasn't necessarily going to talk about this particular motion, but I will just say that I do a lot of research online, and what I, from my own research, what I can tell you is the, the information that I think is being seeked by, sought by this amendment generally is found on the websites of local school districts. I have noticed in my own research that when I have a research question, I'm usually able to get the answers to those questions on LEA websites. I can't say the same thing for charter school websites. So that would just be my response to that.
Okay. Thank you, President Albrecht. Vice President Pugh.
And just backing up what President Albrecht just said, just reminding us that this is a conversation that I believe started in April. Was it in April that we had the presentation? And that is where we had a lot of questions raised about what was the difference between the transparency? And to Tom's point, I think this came up before, too, is raising this issue around what's showing, what's ending up in the classrooms with, with these charters versus what is going to the EMOs and how that money is being spent, and trying to figure that out, because I do think we all have concerns about what's, what's ending up in the classroom and what the teacher pay is.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. And Ms. Snyder. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, I mean, as, as the maker of the motion, I'd like to reply to the others. I mean, I, you know, when I look at the original resolution, the PSAs, charter schools are held to the same standards of financial transparency. I mean, financial transparency is statutory. If they were not doing exactly what the statute says, they would be in violation of law, and nobody is accusing them of being in violation of law. So they are being held to the same standards of financial transparency. It seems there might be an interest, I don't know what, to harass PSAs, or, I, I'm not exactly sure the, the intent, but I guess if we're going in this direction of asking for something that we already know, you know, I don't know to the extent that, you know, to the extent that, that traditional schools have a vastly superior inequity advantage over charters, I would, in the same vein as the original motion, I'd like to know that as well, I guess. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Ms., Ms. Snyder.
Just to, I mean, I'm thinking, you know, just rereading this and trying to understand the conversation on the whole, it just seems like if we want a complete transparency, a picture of transparency financially, that it, I think it's a fair thing, even if we don't have to FOIA it, to at least put it in a document with all the information available to discuss further. And maybe even just another addition to this conversation is, should we be looking to at all of the various superintendent paychecks? I, I don't know, like, is it, is that something, if you're looking to FOIA for this information, and then considering the full discussion even further? Because if we're, if we're trying to compare what gets to the classroom with what actually goes into the school districts, it seems like even the original motion doesn't fully capture that that's what our board is, is trying to do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other Board members, comments or questions? All right, hearing, hearing and seeing none. We have a, a motion to amend. We, I'm sorry, we have Dr. Pritchett's, Dr. Pritchett, a late entry for a comment slash question.
Yeah, I, I apologize. And this is territory that I have not done, the amount of research that I know President Albrecht has done, but it's my understanding that it is the EMOs that the public has difficulty obtaining information from related to finances, whatever they are, be they salaries, be they, you know, how much money's going into their classrooms, et cetera. Because, again, my understanding, EMOs are considered private entities and therefore do not fall under the public FOIA rules. And I just simplified that. I'm sure it's a heck of a lot more complex than that. So I'm just putting that out there as part of the rationale, the committee, the Legislative Committee, that was part of our discussion. I do agree with you, Dr. Rice, that if we want to look at information about bonds that districts have out there, sinking funds, et cetera, that they are required, local districts are required to have that within their financial information as far as, you know, how they're spending that money, et cetera. So concur with, with Nikki. I'm not sure we need to even do a FOIA on that. If somebody wanted that information, you know, if someone could compile it, that, you know, might be helpful in the conversation. But again, just from my perspective, it is the EMOs that I believe we're having the information kind of break down with because they're not providing us with that info.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Pritchett. Any other comments or questions from Board members? Hearing and seeing none. The vote on the table initially for you is on Mr. McMillan's amendment. It's been moved by Mr. McMillan, seconded by Ms. Snyder. The amendment is in the, the recommended amendment is in the chat. Marilyn, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn?
No.
Tilly?
No.
Albrecht?
No.
Two-six, motion fails.
Thank you. And now the, the vote is on the, the base amendment, or the base, the base resolution. Mr. McMillan, do you have a comment on the base resolution?
Yes, yeah, I do. I, you know, I actually, you know, if my amendment would have passed, I think I would have been supportive of this. I really, you know, although I think it's probably too narrow, so, I don't know, maybe I wouldn't have. I, I guess I would be more interested in like, you know, the vendor, we're talking about EMOs that are vendors. They, you know, the charter school is a public school, and it contracts with numerous, you know, I mean, people to do maybe the roofing, people that might do, I mean, schools contract with outside businesses to do bussing, cafeteria, roof contractors, all kinds of stuff. So, you know, I'm really open to a discussion, and I think I mentioned this when I was in the legislature, of any entity that has, that gets government money, maybe they, they should be open to FOIA for that specific amount of money, you know, that, where that goes. And so, you know, transparency, you know, when you're talking about a private entity, you know, can be, can have different meanings, but, you know, I certainly am open to, if it was, if it was more broad and not narrow based on just one contractor, but if it was all contractors of, of public schools, including charter schools, I certainly would be more open to pursuing that. That would be legislative, obviously. And I'll just reiterate, though, the, the base motion, you know, PSAs are held to the same standards of financial transparency as traditional public school districts. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Dr. Albrecht, a comment?
Well, I, I just want to say I appreciate those comments from Mr. McMillan, and I agree. I think if public money's involved, and there should be extra transparency involved, even when it comes to vendors, but I, I would fall short of calling an EMO a vendor, particularly if they are operating under a sweep contract, which essentially means they take the entire budget of the PSA and spend it as, as they choose. They do put out a budget for the PSA, but it is so broad that it's really hard to understand how the funding is actually working. And so I, I don't think of them as, as vendors, per se. I think of them as entities that are essentially running the school. running the school and therefore allow the PSA, even though we say PSAs have to follow the same transparency rules, the reality is, if you're, if you're spending a lot of time on these websites like I do, the transparency amounts to, we don't actually have any employees, therefore we don't have to tell you what we pay our employees. That, to me, is not transparency. And so that's, I think, is where we're trying to get the answer to this. Not only that, but when Professor Myron was giving his presentation, I think the thing that stuck out to me the most was, it indicated, and I believe the number was roughly 70%, when he sent a FOIA request to a PSA, 70% of them didn't even respond. And that, to me, is not following the same transparency rules as other schools. So I think that is, those are the two things that I would highlight that I think make this something that we want to take a look at seriously as part of our oversight role in the state of Michigan.
Thank you, President Albrecht. Dr. Pugh?
And I'll just add to what Cassandra and what others have said, is that at a time when we're looking at school financing, and I think this has come up here, I mean, how do we not address this? And Dr. Albrecht and others have helped me to see as this conversation continues to swirl around what are PSAs required to do, EMOs required to do, in comparison to traditional public schools? And we keep coming back to the same space. So have, being able to compare, so I want to, again, just reiterate this emphasis on equitable funding and how do we do that without knowing of this piece of the puzzle? And then the other piece is that we know that Michigan has one of the highest and proliferating, growing charter EMOs in the country. And we've just looked at two reports that have told us that, and maybe that was mentioned. But that also, again, is what's so critical about the timing of this. So I am happy that the legislative committee has put this in front of us. So I definitely will be supporting this. And again, to Tom's point, you know, we want to know if the money is making it to the classrooms, and we know that there will be some funds that go to contractual things that keep the money, the school running, as with traditional public schools, but we want to be sure of that.
Okay, thank you very much. If we could, if we could at this point do a vote on the roll call vote, Marilyn, on the, on the base motion?
McMillan, I'm sorry, Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Pass.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Abstain.
Strahan?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
6-2, motion carries.
Okay, thank you very, thank you very much. I am having some trouble with my, my computer at this point. If we could, if we could move into board member comments, and President Albrecht, if you would, actually, actually, if we could finish up the legislative committee report, and President Albrecht, if you'd be kind enough to, to chair for just a moment while I worked on the technology. Thank you.
Will do. I will turn this over to Mr. Ackley for additional comments on the legislative committee.
As mentioned earlier, the Senate Education and Career Readiness Committee took up today, Senate Bill 121, which Dr. Albrecht mentioned earlier. It passed out of committee on a 5-2 party line vote, and it's going to the full Senate floor for consideration. Like, if you want to further discuss, I can put up the bill or an analysis of the bill, so you can review that. Which would you prefer, the full bill? It's only a couple pages, but...
I believe it would be helpful because there's a lot of context around this bill that I think we need to understand.
Okay.
Can I just mention something about that bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, that's Senator McBroom's bill, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and when I was in the House, he was my seatmate, and, you know, he's a former teacher, and we, I think I supported his legislation, but it was not this. It morphed into what this bill is, but initially, his idea was that people would be elected, like, in congressional districts on the state board or something, so that they can know that there's some representation from across the state, but that only those people would be the ones voting. Where now this just seems very unfair. I mean, first of all, in a, at a convention, you know, people that are from, what, seven-eighths of the state are going to be deciding who is going to represent one sec, you know, one-eighth of the state. And then, and then when it's a statewide vote, again, seven-eighths of the state are going to be deciding who represents one-eighth of the state. So it, it doesn't really make sense to me. I mean, I, I guess, to some degree, they want somebody in the UP where he's from, or somebody up in, you know, northern Michigan and so on, but I just think this is the wrong way to do it. So, yeah, I hope that it's defeated.
Thank you. Marty, do you want to kind of talk?
Yeah, so as the, as the bill reads, you know, it's the intent of the legislature that members of the State Board of Education be nominated by regions but still elected to serve statewide. They would set up eight regions, as you can see, they're set up by counties, eight groups of counties. And then it says at its fall state convention of 2022, and every eight years thereafter, each political party shall nominate for membership on the State Board of Education one candidate who is a resident of Region Four and Region One, and then it would, and then every two years after, or every year after that, every time, the regions would rotate, so you have constant rotation of regions being represented throughout. And that's, that's basically what the, what the bill reads. So every, every four years, a different set of two regions would be represented.
So I, just to let you know, my chat is about 30 minutes behind, so if you want to say something, I would suggest either just raising your hand or, and we can probably take this off so we can see people, raise your hand or just saying, I'd like to make a comment, but I will just say from my perspective, this, I liken this to having a congressional district that encompasses the entire Upper Peninsula, but then saying only people who live in Marquette can actually run. And then the next year, maybe only people who live in Berga can run. It doesn't make sense. If you're sitting in a statewide elected position, then candidates should be able to come from anywhere within the state. So that is, is my primary concern with this bill. But I also think that moving the regions every two years the way that it does definitely can disenfranchise almost everyone in this state, because if you, let's say, I live in Wayne County, which I do, and I could run in 2022, but then I am forbidden from running for eight years after that. So it really basically determines who gets, who can even put their hat, their name in the hat to run for a statewide office. So I find this to be highly problematic and very, very concerning, and those are just my comments. Others? Ellen, please.
Yes, thank you. I am not sure that this particular legislation is even constitutional. And I would hope, but cannot be assured, that the sponsor contemplated or reflected on the constitutionality of this proposed bill. I also served with Senator McBroom when he was a rep. This is something that has been on his mind since his days in the House. And I would just urge him that if his concern is to have someone from the UP on the state board to direct his energies to recruiting potential candidates to run in that regard, but first to do a thorough analysis of the constitutionality of this measure.
Anyone else? I don't see anyone. So let me speak up if you want to. Pam, go ahead.
You know, and I just, I just want to say that I think in light of all of the attention that is being brought to election reform, and some of what I feel is election reform that is intended and very intentional to disenfranchise and keep certain groups and population out of the electoral process, I think that this lends to that, that mean spirit and that spirit of disenfranchisement. I definitely think that it would not be beneficial to, to groups, to populate, to specific populations. I think it would hurt the Detroit area that has one of the largest school districts. I don't know how that was even taken into consideration when we looked at how the divisions were made, what the thought was. I mean, at least even in the process of redistricting, there's a lot of input that's given to how those boundaries are drawn. So I just think that this would definitely, as others have said, it would harm certain people from being able to run and have influence on the vote, as well as those who could be in the race. And I definitely think that that's intentional. And I think that it lends to the election reforms, that that is the purpose of those election reforms.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Ms. Snyder?
So just, I mean, where we're currently at, though, I just want to draw attention to the reality of the makeup of our board, and that is that most of us are from one part of the state or a certain region of the state, and we genuinely, very seriously, without a doubt, are not representing the full state. So I guess my question to any of our board members would be, if this bill doesn't fit the bill, if you will, is there, is there any sense that anybody would want to move in the direction of, we would like to make sure that we have people who come from all over the state and every region in a consistent way to represent all of our people? That would be my question, as we move forward and discuss it. Because I think that there are lots of schoolchildren that are disenfranchised by not having someone from their region represent them, and that's been the case for many, many years.
Good, thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Pugh, I'm sorry, President Albrecht, and then Dr. Pugh.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. But the reality is that even under the current system, there is no preclusion from someone, you know, from the north part of the state or the Upper Peninsula running for this office. But if you've ever tried to recruit candidates, it's very difficult, particularly if we have in-person meetings and things like that. So that might be part of the issue as well. But this bill actually would do the opposite. So right now, every two years, we could theoretically have a candidate from the Upper Peninsula run for the State Board of Education, but if this bill becomes law, then they would be precluded from running except for once every eight years. And so I guess that would be a larger concern of mine. I would rather, as Ellen suggested, try to recruit candidates to run, because they're always eligible to run, as opposed to try to recruit candidates to run because we have created some kind of system that guarantees only people from certain areas can run for a statewide office, which I agree, I have a hard time understanding how that's even constitutionally possible, to have a seat that represents the entire state, and yet you can only draw candidates from a select region. So that would be one of my concerns with that, and I agree that it's definitely an issue.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Pugh, and then Ms. Snyder?
I looked at, well, my question is, when we say not representing the whole state, because when I can get in my car, I can't wait to get in my car. I'm going to Benton Harbor, I'm going to be in Detroit, I'll be in Flint, I will be here in Saginaw. And so I think that I do represent the whole state, but maybe I'm misunderstanding what we mean when we say representing the whole state. So that, that was my, my question. And then Cassandra, you live in Dearborn, I mean, these, I mean, let's, I'll just, I'll say myself, Tuscola County is very different from the city of Saginaw. I'm just going to say that. So when we talk about represent, you know, everyone, that's, that means, that, that could be different. I mean, within the regions, it could still be different. But I guess my question is, when we say we're not representing the whole state, what do we mean by that? Because geographical areas can be similar to other geographical areas.
Are you asking, can I answer that?
Okay, thank. Well, Dr. Pugh, thank you for, thank you for your sharing. Ms. Snyder, you were up next for a comment.
So I would just, I mean, the most direct way of answering that is that just because one geographical area is similar to the next, doesn't mean that, you know, Escanaba, Michiganders don't want to ever send someone from Escanaba, right? And that, you know, people from Grand Rapids, I think Lupe was like one of the first people in years from West Michigan. So I don't think that we should just assume that because we look like, sound like, or represent that demographic, that we are, we've got it covered. Because I think that regionally speaking, Michiganders just want to know their, who's representing them, know them and have access to them, be able to connect with them, talk with them, and live life alongside them. So that kind of brings me back to something we've talked about multiple times this year. And again, this is in the spirit of getting us to a place where maybe that, maybe we could make something like this work at some point in time, because it would be appropriate, and I think it would be healthy when we think about education representation. If we had access to getting those people connecting via online, which is what we've talked about, we've been doing it through the pandemic, then that wouldn't necessarily be an issue, I don't think. People feeling like they could run and, and do the work that they're required to do at home in Escanaba, or up in the thumb, or in Traverse City, or West Michigan, they could do that, it would be possible. And so, you know, and when we think about what's constitutional and what's not, I wonder if there's a conversation and a pathway to get to the place where we really do want all Michigan kids to be able to experience and access representation from people who live from where they, where they go to school essentially, and that they can access them. So I think there's a way to do it, I think there's a pathway, I think the discussion is, is worth having and not, not shying away from.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Pugh, back to you. You may be on mute.
Yeah, I was saying Cassandra can go ahead and go, I saw she was raising her hand. I can wait, I had a, I've already had a...
I'll, we appreciate that. Dr. Albrecht, and then back to Dr. Pugh.
Yeah, so I actually agree with Nikki that this would be a wonderful thing to do. And I think as we've looked at this before, the question isn't with the board and what we can do, the question is with the Open Meetings Act. And so my recommendation would be to ask the legislative committee to come up with language to encourage perhaps the legislature to review the Open Meetings Act and see if there isn't a way that we could utilize telecommunications in a better way and still be consistent with the Open Meetings Act. I would be in complete agreement with that, but I think it's, the end question isn't up to us, it's really up to what is possible through law.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Pugh, back to you, and then Mr. Ackley with a comment.
So I guess my, my thought is, I guess G... So I guess my, my thought is, I guess geographical representation is not the only thing that we, we need to be concerned with.
We just lost you. I think you went into.
I think you're, you're on, you're on mute.
Okay, I'm sorry. So hopefully I wasn't, I wasn't on mute the whole time, though, right? So.
No, no, not at all.
My thought is, is that the parties, it just seems like that is something that they should be doing in their recruitment efforts. I don't see how, you know, we wouldn't take that responsibility on. I don't see how, the Legislature is not going to force that. You might end up having people that may not run in those districts at all. So I mean, I think the party does quite a bit of effort, at least I know we do, to, to make sure that we have representation that represents the people and the children, the schoolchildren and the parents of the state. And I think that the party is, is doing that already. So this seems like something that's forced, and something different than what, what we're talking about.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ackley, and then Ms. Snyder.
Yeah, so I can bring some clarity to a couple of questions that have arisen. Whether it is constitutional, you see that here in the third paragraph, where it said the board consists of eight members nominated by the party conventions, elected at large, in terms of eight, as prescribed by law. So that's what this bill does, is prescribing by law how those, how those members are elected. So I think it would be constitutional. And then, as a second question about members from outstate, in my 18 years here, I think there have been four members from what's considered outstate Michigan. One is Dr. Pugh, Lupe Ramos-Mantini was one. And before her, there was Carolyn Curtin from Everett, which is north central, west central Michigan, and then Nancy Danhoff from East Lansing. So there have been, in my 18 years here, four members what considered outstate Michigan have served on the State Board.
Thank you, Mr. Ackley. Ms. Snyder?
I just circle back around. I mean, he just sort of, what Marty just said, that is a sheer disparity in equity. So I, again, I don't think it's any spirited. I really do believe that this would really bring Michiganders more access. And I don't think we've ever had an opportunity to do it until we started to meet online. I think that's kind of one of the, I mean, we've talked about it in years past, and whatever the spirit was, and that's, is that. But the discussion that's on the table now, I think, is more, wow, look at what we can do, given what has changed so significantly, is kind of where, and anytime you can, you can involve more people in contributing to and participating in, that's going to be a positive for education in general, and for Michigan kids.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything more to report to the board in the legislative update? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Let's go to comments from board members. Any additional comments from board members? It's been a prolific meeting. Do board members have any additional reflections?
I do. This is Tiffany.
Okay, very good. Very good. Ms. Tilly?
You know, we, I don't know why I'm hearing a lot of noise, but at any rate, hopefully you guys can hear me well. You know, we've concentrated a lot on how the pandemic has affected our children in the schools, and, and schools in general. And I was just reflecting today on how it's affected us, not being able to meet in person, and how much we've missed. And even, you know, our Teacher of the Year is leaving, and I sit next to the Teacher of the Year, and I haven't gotten a chance to meet Owen in person. And I really wish that I could have had the pleasure of meeting him in person. And hopefully, we will after this pandemic is all over. And then also, losing time with Sheila before she leaves. Sheila was just wonderful when Judy and I came aboard in 2019, preparing us, you know, for the State Board, and welcoming us, and introducing us to the team. And I'm definitely going to miss her. I hate that she's leaving us, but I do want to congratulate you on your retirement. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Other, other reflections. Dr. Pugh, did you have your hand up?
I think so. And I just wanted to respond, there was a person, a parent, and unfortunately, we couldn't do it earlier, that mentioned, that talked about the Michigan School for the Deaf. I just want to make sure that our board members who are here now, as well as hopefully that parent is listening. I know, since I've been on the board, we have actually held a board member, a board meeting, maybe two. Well, at least one. We have one on site. And I spent time in Flint, where I would spend time with the, the community and at the school as well. And I do recall, maybe there was a time where there was someone who was on the board, who actually served with the Michigan School for the Deaf. So we know that as, this, this has been a trying time, this, these last two years, for, for all of our students. And we are anxious for our students to safely, safely get back in school, and with teachers there with those students, so they're not showing up in the school and still having to use electronics to do their lessons. So I just wanted to respond to that parent's comments. And then, just to reiterate, Cassandra, as well as Tiffany, we just thank you for, for your service. And we definitely wish you well. I know that you, Sheila, you stepped in at a time that was very difficult. We were going through some hot and heavy issues. And so we just thank you, and we wish you well. We really thank you for your service, Sheila, because you were coming out of, you came out of retirement before, right?
Yes, this is my second retirement. Thank you.
And, and hey, maybe there's a third. We don't know. But hopefully, it won't be an emergency like, like, you know, some of those that we've seen. But we just really appreciate you. We really do. I do. And I know that the full board does. So thank you for your service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, just quickly, I'm part of a Facebook group of Troy parents, whose kids go to public school there. And they posted a, there was a survey for seventh, seventh graders and their parents from physical education class, that was put out recently, in the last few days, that talks, the questions are, you know, is it okay or not okay for teenagers to see R-rated movies, to wear revealing clothing, to engage in sexual activity? Is there anything you would like to ask your parent about what they feel concerning these topics? And then there's the parent opinion side with the same questions, except the last one. Then there's dating worksheet for parents and for the students about when's an appropriate date? What, what is an appropriate date for a teenager? What are the expectations your family has for the types of people you should date? What should be off limits on a date? I mean, this is just outrageous. And I think it probably falls under social emotional learning. This is the kind of stuff I've talked about, that is just, just outrageous. I mean, this, people wonder, you know, I wonder if public schools think that the public is going to continue to want to fund them. Because this kind of stuff, and the CRT, and, you know, it's just, they, you know, public school, if they really want to keep having funding, you know, they better not be doing this kind of stuff. This is just outrageous. And I, you know, the Troy's parents are pushing back. And if it's being done in Troy, I doubt it, that's the only place in the state. So this is, it's very concerning to me. I wanted to bring it up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other, other board members reflections? Hearing and seeing none. I want to just share that I did have the opportunity to go to the Michigan School for the Deaf graduation last week. I had the opportunity to go there and participate in the graduation with Dr. Kennick Schneck, Ms. Weckstein, Ms. Rink. It was an outstanding graduation. It was joyous. It was great to be there with student staff, and, and families. And looking forward to being onsite at the school next year, as, as we're not only back in school more fully at Michigan School for the Deaf, but across the state of Michigan. There is no July meeting. Our next three meetings are Tuesday, August 10th, Tuesday, September 14th, Tuesday, October 12th, all regular meetings, all at 9:30 a.m. If there are any topics board members would like included in future meeting agendas, please notify Marilyn or me for consideration of those topics. It is 3:46. And every so often, we owe you time back, as opposed to we giving you time back. It's good that we've banked a little bit of time with you. Have a great day and a great week. Thank you.